Good morning and welcome to your Board of County Commissioners Land Use Workshop. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. So this is titled "Land Use," obviously, but we thought we'd actually start with land use rather than budget because so much of what we're facing now in terms of sustainability, economic sustainability, is really driven by land use choices, those that have been made and those that we will make. And so what you'll hear today is a repetition of some of the things you've already heard in terms of principles that you've adopted in the past, but really you'll hear a lot of new things, innovative things, that we want to have you consider, ask questions about as we look at ways to essentially harmonize all of the different interests that drive land use. There's aesthetic, there's economic, there's service considerations, which gets back to our budget. And so what we are going to show you today from both Lucia and from Chris Sinclair from Renaissance is a model that's been used elsewhere in Florida successfully in dealing with extremely large tracts of land, 300,000 acres or more, which has some correspondence to what we're dealing with in the unincorporated area. And it really does, what you're going to hear is a way to successfully harmonize the different interests that there are, environmental concerns, economic concerns, service concerns, in a way that really helps us create a sustainable community over a very long period of time, 10, 20, 30, 40 years. What we see in terms of next steps is not going to be something that's going to change overnight. And even if you decide to move forward with some of the principles you hear today from Lucia and from Chris Sinclair, it may be eight, 10, 12 months by the time we apply them here, have stakeholder meetings, talk about it. So that just kind of gives you an idea of what we're wrestling with here. There's no quick solutions. There's a lot of different interests here that have to be balanced, but we feel that unless, I feel, we all feel, that unless we start looking at the way we utilize our remaining land differently, that we will not be sustainable economically. And as we begin to get into the budget discussion and show you all of the different components that you kind of, everyone kind of knows of intellectually, we're going to start grounding some of those things in the reality of cost, cost of service that extends to schools, it extends to everything that affects what we do here. The good news is we're starting from a strong place. We're still a AAA rated county, only one of 30 or so left in the country. We have strong reserves, so that's really not the issue. If you look at it in terms of corporate environment, we have a strong balance sheet, we have very strong assets and reserves. That's not the problem. The problem is sustaining the operating side of this business, of government. And even if we make investments in infrastructure to align ourselves differently, it's the operating cost of that infrastructure, whether it's water and sewers, schools, roads, that really becomes more of the challenge because it goes on forever. It is just one of those things that, just like our household budget, we can build in addition to our house, but if we can't afford to heat it and operate it and maintain it, you know, then that's probably not a good thing. So I will stop there and ask Lucia to come up and take you through some initial framing and then we'll go to Chris Sinclair and then open it up for discussion.
Good morning Commissioners. Lucia Garce is Chief of Development and Infrastructure. So before I hit the slides, what I'd like to talk about is kind of following on what Mike talked about, kind of the framing what we need to do. And we were just talking about framing a home and having an understanding. But we really are at a pivotal point. I've been here for a lot of years and watched the land use process, all the way back when the first comprehensive plan was adopted, and then everything in between. And from my perspective, what I think is happening is there's really three things that are giving us opportunities that we just haven't had before. One is that our role with the Planning Commission, our long-term planning agency, is just absolutely better than it's ever been before. And as we work through with the Planning Commission on issues of long-term planning, how that relates to the zoning conditions that you show up, that show up in front of you, what we're learning is that part in the middle has been a real challenge. And so we have a comprehensive plan and have a land development code, but that part in the middle's been a bit of a struggle, and so we're working on that piece of it. The other thing that's giving us an opportunity is something called 9J5, which grounded our comprehensive planning process years ago, has been somewhat modified, and we have opportunities to make decisions on our own. So we've been given a cookbook, and now we don't have to cook by the cookbook, but we know what we have to make at the end. And so while it's been somewhat helpful to not have 9J5, it's also a bit frightening because we don't have the rules. So again, in working through the Planning Commission for a number of years of how to update the comprehensive plan without the directions on how to do it, we tried a number of initiatives we'll talk about, but we really need a framework, and that's what this piece is. The third one is that Mike talked about and keeps reminding of us, the cost of land use decisions that we make, that you make every other Tuesday, I guess just once a month now, right? Land use meetings. And so while 9J5 anticipated concurrency as a way to control and manage the cost of growth, it had unintended consequences. So now it's a little bit of figuring out how is land created that's valuable, what's productive, what does that mean? Also, the comprehensive plan didn't really give us insight on urban form. It didn't drill down to that part in the middle that deals with street-level placemaking, and so we think that becomes a really important piece of this as we move on. So what we'll do today is we'll have Chris Sinclair from Renaissance, who's tried, who's worked on this in a number of areas, provide some examples of how they've done it in Osceola Seminole and on the Space Coast. The other piece that becomes really important to this is citizen engagement and how the community becomes a part of this kind of strategic visionary process. And that will be the Space Coast example particularly, where he will drill down about scenario planning. Melissa will come back and talk about some of the key things that the Planning Commission has already done and laid the groundwork on the scenario planning. But what you will have before you coming up soon are decisions about population growth. Where does it go? How much goes where? And it's not just the where and how much, but what does it translate to in terms of form? How does it help facilitate transit? Where are the nodes? How does it help address affordability questions, job creation, et cetera? So those are kind of the highlights. So in this presentation, I'm going to just give you fair warning that there is going to be something that looks like a Polk Parkway. And so let me just say in advance that it's not a recommendation for a Polk Parkway, but it's an understanding of what's happening at the very regional level. And Chris Sinclair will reiterate that what we're doing today, what we're bringing to you are not recommendations, but understanding some of the pressures that are coming at us so that you are better able to make policy decisions and you can answer questions of why and how, and so that as you look at growth in the future, you know the framework in which to make it in, and we know how to facilitate some of those policy questions for you. So just, I think I may have hit on this, we're going to talk about guiding principles, how we look at growth differently, and this strategic framework, which is really the part in the middle. And then Chris will come with the North Ranch Sector Plan that was done, that talks about some of the contextual framework dynamics, and then how they handle the scenarios and the community outreach, which I think is a critical piece of this. We'll come back, then Melissa will talk about the comp plan piece, and then we'll come back and talk about next steps. But for those of you who may not have been here when we adopted in 2015, the Board adopted five guiding principles for how we grow, and they're really still very relevant. Really is overarching to have equality of life, but it's the fiscal sustainability piece, economic prosperity, responsible growth, and just making those actions that get us there. The things that you see on the right, some of them have already been done, like mobility fees and looking at a couple of those things because it was done in 2015, and so we didn't adopt the, one of the examples on the right, but we're really focusing on those big pieces on the left that really deal with what this Board has adopted and we believe are still very viable principles for how we grow. I think one of the things that this shows is as you watch the colors come to the page, is it shows how development patterns happened between the '30s and the current time period. And if you look at how that happened as you go back, there were nodes, there were clearly nodes that were identified, economically sustainable nodes along rail lines, along rivers, along corridors. And so those dissipated as the automobile became more and more prevalent. And so the development pattern that we have here looks more like this. And so the question is, is this what we want? Do we want to continue this pattern? Or do we want to look at alternatives? And what are we facing as we look at alternatives? So again, with the Planning Commission, we have worked on a number of things, and a number of the projects that you may see is we've worked on livable, complete streets on 46th and 42nd in the university area, the I-4 corridor, ULI did a study that came back, requires us to provide some context for that as well. Brandon Phase Two is a project that was started with the Planning Commission, looking at the community plan in Brandon, and then taking it to more of a redevelopment project, looking at how some of those initiatives could work, where we could recreate places in Brandon that deal with reinvigorating the grid, reinvigorating the community. The words that you see as plats are not real estate plats, they're really plan, planning land use studies that go along with looking at any corridor, and what those really are traffic sheds. They're understanding how traffic moves, how we do better understanding of mobility corridors, and undertaking something that Qatar is doing for us, a South County Integrated Mobility Study with origins and destinations of how people travel. That's all important also, is that we look at projects in the SRTAC. What do we do? How do we get there? What's important? So on top of that, in the past, we've looked at nodes on key economic spaces, where to grow, how to grow, how networks work, how the grid supports that, what land use patterns can be supportive for economic growth. We looked at the I-4 corridors I mentioned, and as well, we've looked at the detail now, starting at a higher community plan level and then zooming in to walkability zones, those are the little clocks on the right-hand side, five-minute walking distances, to really understand the pedestrian environment in Brandon. And then the South County study of looking how people travel and where they travel. So all of that is important because again, these start bridging. Once we did these projects, we said, okay, so what, now what? What do we do with them? And we struggled with, how does this fit in the comp plan? Where does it fit? Is it locational criteria? Does locational criteria matter much without the context of urban form? And so we're really talking about bringing a strategic framework to you where it starts with a really fundamental of understanding of environmental preservation, where we want to create environmental policies and how we want to create, preserve them, economic and development, housing strategies, infrastructure and service investments and the cost of that, and then ultimately the comprehensive plan and community plans, how we can reinvigorate and tool up for those. So that's the strategic part, that's the piece in the middle, and it requires again the partnership of both agencies moving forward and working with you all to see, and the community of course, to determine what that looks like so that we can get about getting the comp plan done, and then you have more framework and context when you make decisions that come to you on zoning matters. So with that, I will then turn it over to Chris Sinclair. I think it will be a chunky presentation, so sit back, fasten your seatbelts, but it will, it will really provide some background for you, and then I think once we get through that, we're able to answer questions and talk about next steps. So with that, Chris Sinclair.
So good morning. So I'm going to start by talking about the systems that are influencing land use and development. Growth and development is one of those systems. It's something that's overwhelming not only Hillsborough County, but the regions, and we'll talk about that. The economic system, transportation, environmental system, they all work in concert with each other. Growth and development is the driver for why you're needing to do the things that you're doing. It continues to go at a very rapid pace. What's interesting, and you'll see this in the presentation I'm going to make this morning, there's some patterns that start emerging out of growth and development. And that's because of the decisions that a lot of different actors are making, trying to optimize their location across space. So the patterns are pretty obvious and evident, and that's something that we've got to consider, that you have to consider moving forward. The economic system provides the opportunities and jobs to sustain the development. What's interesting about economic development is each industry cluster has a different set of requirements in terms of its location needs, the location needs of its employees. So you have to pay attention to those geographic and placemaking concerns. Transportation system expands to accommodate the growth. One of the interesting things about transportation is it can be leveraged in different ways to influence growth. And then the environment is always something that's there that has to be dealt, not dealt with, but preserved and protected. Water quality has been a big issue in the state as well as habitat. And one of the things we haven't done well is deal with the environment on a larger scale, on a habitat scale, so that's something to be considered. So these are the different systems that are at play, and I would be talking about those differing systems at play. What's happened though is we have an incomplete picture because we have a lot of different actors that focus in on each one of the different systems. You've got a group of people, government agencies all the way from the federal level to the state level to the local level that are focused in on the environment and not necessarily understanding what's going on with economic development or with transportation or with growth and development. So what's happened is you have an incomplete picture of how all of these things come together, and that incomplete picture has, sometimes distorts the perspective. So what we're proposing is to come up with a complete picture, an integrated vision, as Mike said earlier, a picture that harmonizes and balances the systems appropriately, answers key questions of what and where, and those questions are fundamental in understanding the how questions that you need to get to. And with this picture, now you have a more sound base with which to make proactive decision-making as Lucia mentioned earlier. So just to give you a sense of sort of the technical aspects of how you pull these systems together and how you consider these systems, we did a sector plan for the North Ranch over in the Orlando area. The Deseret Ranch was a piece of property, it's about 300,000 acres, it's owned by the Church of Latter Day Saints of Jesus Christ. They bought the property back in 1950s, it's now the largest cowcalf operation in the United States. But they, and they're in a strategic part of the region, which you can see on the map there, is the area that's in gray and it's outlined, that is the ranch as it sits in central Florida. Just to give you a sense of how big the ranch is, if you took it and you superimposed it on downtown Orlando, it would extend all the way to the Beltway system and fill in the Beltway system in and around Orlando. The plan that we, the part that we planned is, in Osceola County in particular, it's a little bit more than half of the entire piece of property. So we had to think big, and we had to think about larger context and how the ranch fit into the larger context. Again, the reason why we had to get, you know, if it wasn't for growth in the region, the church would have been very happy to just continue to use this property for agriculture. It's a very productive piece of property for them. But they're getting a lot of pressures from a lot of different places in terms of landfills, transportation quarters, utility quarters, market demands, people wanting to buy bits and pieces of the property. So it's the growth in the region that forced them to start thinking about what to do with the property. The sector plan itself was a partnership, a very effective partnership between the church and Osceola County, myregion.org, which was doing regional visioning at the time, and the East Central Florida Task Force. And it was because there were shared goals about what should happen for the region. We started with an environmental framework. These are all the data sources that we used to put together the framework, but I think the key thing is, the eventual environmental framework that we came up with, it looked at the environment from a habitat perspective, what needed to be protected beyond protecting just wetlands. What were the upland, wetland areas that needed to be protected to create an entire habitat? So what you're seeing on this map is the environmental framework for the ranch, and you can see there's large swaths of green, both for agriculture and for conservation, and this, these are, these are large, large pieces of the property that we're looking at. So that was the environmental side of what we did. Then we started looking at the economic development, what was going on in the region and how did the ranch and this piece of property fit into that? And it was fascinating what we found. We started looking at the different quarters in Orlando, there was a quarter between Orlando and Daytona Beach on I-4 to the northeast, and we found that in that particular quarter, the economic clusters were finance, healthcare, professional services, and some high tech. Then we looked at the quarter to the northwest from Orlando up to Ocala, and a very different set of economic clusters. There it was agriculture in and around Apopka, and retirement, the villages, top of the world, that was what was driving the economy in that particular quadrant. In the southwest quadrant between downtown Orlando and Lakeland, predominantly tourism, Disney, Universal Studios, Legoland, and transportation logistics. And where we were sitting on the ranch was in the southeast quadrant, there's not that elegant connection between Orlando and Melbourne, but what is there is high tech. You've got the spaceport, you've got Harris down in Melbourne, you have UCF and all the aerospace around UCF, and then you had Medical City that's happening just south of the airport. So we understood, this is the dynamic that we were dealing with on this piece of the property, it was going to be oriented to high tech. That was also recognized at the state level, and the East Central Florida Task Force was formed to provide more connectivity in that particular area. So as we started putting together the plan for the ranch, we started looking at existing quarters, existing centers and commute sets around those centers, what transportation was either there or planned. One of the interesting things that we started thinking about and considering was the Brightline service that was going to the west and to the north of the property and how we could hook into that. Then we started looking at what additional connectivity would be needed in terms of multimodal corridors. And then based on all that information, we started understanding that the focal point for the plan was going to be an area where the major corridors crossed and where we had commute sets that didn't overlap with other commute sets that were out there. So it was a very deliberative process. We knew at economic development, we were shooting for, we understood the environmental framework, and finally we had to get into the place types, and that was something that Lucia was mentioning earlier. You know, what was this place going to look like? How was it going to work? One of the things we started out with when we started putting in the details of the plan was it was going to be oriented around transit, some sort of premium transit, could be light rail, could be bus rapid transit, but it was going to be oriented around transit. That sets off a whole set of decision-making in terms of how you put the places around transit. This is not going to be designed for roads. So we put centers, the red center, the red dot that you see in the middle of the picture is that downtown area that everything pivoted off of. You see a series of centers to the north and south of that, they're spaced about seven miles apart, and I'll get into the rationale for that in just a little bit later. But we have the major multimodal quarters with expressways, premium transit, arterials, roadway networks, and that was all stitched together by place types. And the place types range from urban core and urban center, very intense downtown kind of communities, all the way down to lower density neighborhoods. But you can see with that image, it was all linked together by a fairly tight grid network, and it all oriented and focused on the blue lines, which were premium transit alignments. So that's, that's what we did on the ranch, that's how we technically got from point A to point B. The sector plan was approved, and it is now something that's part of both the state and local planning. So the dynamics at play, we were asked to start looking, okay, what's going on here in Hillsborough County, using the same sort of high-level assessment that you did for the ranch. So I'm going to, I'm going to talk about sort of the patterns that are out there that we're going to be paying attention to, that you need to be paying attention to. And we're going to start at the mega-region level, and I know you're on the western edge of that, but you are hooked into this mega-region, and the mega-region continues to go in a fairly rapid pace. So the mega-region includes Tampa Bay, Orlando, Sarasota, Daytona, and Melbourne, all those places that are highlighted on the map. The dark green that you see are conservation lands that have been protected, and then you see a series of light green to darker red, and that, the redder the color, the more intense the development. So this gives you a pretty good flavor of how development sort of spreads across the mega-region. The mega-region, transportation orients most of the development in the mega-region, it's I-4, it's I-75, it's I-95 and the Turnpike. But this is the pattern, I'm going to start getting into the pattern, there's a pattern out there. There's existing central business districts with development happening around those central business districts. Each one of those central business districts is located on a high-speed facility, it's a high-speed quarter, because that's what provides access into these places and the services and the things that people need to get to within these places. What's fascinating is that each one of these centers is about 50 miles apart from one another, and there's, there's no, it's not an accident, it happens because of this optimization of what, what people are trying to get access to. Now, as residential development starts to spread away from the centers, the centers get further and further away for those people that are, that are on the new development on the edge, so what happens is new centers start propping up in between to provide services and opportunities that people want to get to on a more frequent basis. So you see this, this, this series of minor centers along the way. And then there's new centers that are, that are starting to emerge in the mega-region, the villages, Four Corners in the North Ranch that I just talked about. And what's I think really interesting is that the transportation network is being built to serve this new development, these new centers. So you see that there, over in the Orlando area, there's, they're calling it the I-4 parallel quarter that's going all the way from 95 back into I-4 just west of, near Disney World. It's potentially could extend over to the Polk Parkway, and the question then becomes, will it extend even further to the west? And these are some of the things that you all have to think about and consider. Are these things that you want to have happen or not? So that has to, has to be part of what we, we need to think about and help you react to those sorts of things. The other thing is Brightline is building its system from South Florida up into downtown Orlando with the possibility of connecting into Tampa at some point in time. So let's zoom into this particular region, it's got three CBDs, Lakeland, Tampa, Sarasota, they're beginning to merge into each other. What's, this is again, back to the pattern, there's other centers, it's like a circus tent, since we've started with metaphors, there's a circus tent that gets created, and the highest pole in the circus tent typically is a central business district. And then about seven miles away from that particular, that pole is a series of smaller poles, and then, and they're typically around seven miles away from the first pole, the middle pole. Here, it's, there's no exception to that, USF to the north is about seven miles from downtown, Brandon to the east about seven miles from downtown, Westshore is not quite seven miles downtown, but it's got a bay to the, to the west of it, and McDill's another seven miles. Then another, another seven miles out, there's another set of centers that are typically out there, and that's the case here with Plant City and with Sun City down to the south. So that's sort of the dynamics, and as Lucia mentioned before, you can, even if you look at historical patterns, you can see that growth starts orienting around these centers and these centers starting to merge together. So the key question that So the key question that Lucia posed a bit earlier is, how do you deal with these, deal with this market dynamics that are going on in a way that makes sense for Hillsborough County? So again, the big driver here is just the magnitude of growth that's coming to the region and how you're going to try, how are you going to accommodate that growth? So the first step in a process would be to determine what the environmental framework needs to be. And the framework in this part of the world probably needs to initially focus on river valleys and enhancements around those river valleys, again, getting at the landscape features, not just, as a friend of mine would say, not playing ring around the wetlands, but doing significant protection of habitat. Then you've got a series of existing centers. Each one of those centers has a market shed about it, and those circles represent those market sheds where people typically come from that work in those centers or shop in those centers. So what's the existing lay of the land there, and how do you optimize that pattern? Choices, there is, there has, there was, the Hillsborough, the voters in Hillsborough County voted in a penny sales tax to improve multimodal transportation. So those improvements are going to take place, and intensities will increase along those quarters where multimodal transportation is provided. There is the opportunity to go out, and the question is, how do you grow out? Where do you grow out? Sort of understanding the market dynamics that are out there. And could there be even more centers out there further out into the future? And then you've got to think about that multimodal transportation system that's built in the early stages, can that be expanded eventually out to further parts of the county to provide those options? That has to all be orchestrated. It has to all be pulled together in some shape or fashion, and that would be the intention of what, what the, that integrated vision and the complete picture would be. Then, as Lucia said earlier, you have to start thinking about the details. What actually goes on within that development? What kind of development is it? You know, is it walkable communities around transit? Is it something else? Is it a mixture of all of the above? So all of these things are things that need to be dealt with and considered as you move forward and putting together a plan. So I'm going to, as Lucia said, and Mike said earlier, we went through a process in Brevard County. And when we went through the process at the time, Brevard County had just been hit pretty hard. NASA had pulled out, they weren't quite sure what they were going to do next, where the economic development was going to come from. So they said, you know, in putting together a transportation plan, we need to, we need to have a vision about how we can synergize, use transportation to help us synergize economic development. That was their primary focus. So this process that I'm about to go through is to illustrate how you go out to the community, get them engaged in owning what they want to do and how they want to see the future of the county, what they want to see in terms of the future, in terms of where and what, and how you get feedback along the way, just to understand how you can fine-tune what you're doing. So we had four scenarios. This is all based on workshops we had with the community. We had four scenario, stories that emerged from those conversations. The first is the obvious. What, what happens if the past trends just continue into the future? But the other, second story that they came up with is, what if we invest in and connect the ports? Because ports are the key thing for Brevard County, the spaceport, seaport, airport. What if we invested in those things? What if we embrace, and what is uniquely Brevard, which is technology? What if we had a scenario that did that? And the fourth scenario is, what if we balanced open space and development and provided people the choices? So those were the scenario stories that we came up with, or they came up with. We had to translate those stories into actual scenarios that had data and technical analysis behind them. We used place types as our building blocks, the place types. We gave them a palette of place types to look at. There were a set of place types that were walkable, transit-friendly. There was another set of place types that were continuing what had happened in Brevard County in the past, which were more auto-oriented and suburban. People were allowed to figure out how much of the future population and employment growth would go into what kind of place type. So in this particular graphic that you're seeing on the green, on the screen, the light blue is auto-oriented place types, and you can see that the bars there are high. That meant, in this particular scenario, most of the development went into auto-oriented single uses, very little went into walkable. This was the trend scenario. This is, just to set the stage. What people tended to do was they gravitated more to this kind of configuration. So you see that there's more population and employment growth in walkable and mixed use. So there was clear preference when we talked to people about what kind of place types they wanted to live in. There was a little bit of auto-oriented land uses. So they used that, and then they allocated those place types to different places to complete the story. This is the way the story plays out, and what you're seeing on the right here is what the allocation was looking like. So we took the scenarios, we developed the scenarios, we took them back to the community and said, okay, what, what do you think? And I'll just give you a few. This is for the connected community scenario that we had. The positives were concentrated growth, there was a multimodal emphasis that they liked, there was a mix of housing options. But here's the, you know, here's the, the big trade-off that comes up. There were some negatives. How are we going to pay for that transit? Are we overemphasizing multifamily housing? For the port scenario, feedback on that particular scenario. Positives, it does emphasize what's unique about Brevard. It does promote walkability and transit. It does provide housing choices, but it focuses too much of our economic development emphasis on the north part of the county, and that was, that was not something that was perceived as a positive. So then we had people, asked people, okay, then tell us how the scenarios compare against these major goals that you all established at the very beginning of the process. So we had the four scenarios, they rated the four scenarios as being high or second high in terms of the ranking. What you're seeing with these bars is the highest and second highest rankings, and you can see, in terms of protecting the natural environment, people prefer the high-tech lifestyle in the connected communities. The trend was not preferred by many people at all. Terms of positioning for economic prosperity, the port centers, high-tech lifestyle were the highest, the trend was the lowest in terms of preferences. And then in determining, accommodating future population growth, there was the connected communities that was the preferred. Again, the trend was least preferred. So you took all of these, these, these bits of information and insight and feedback to understand what was going on, what people preferred, and that was used to put together the vision theme and the vision map. So what you're seeing on the left are the themes that we developed from the feedback that we got, and what you're seeing on the right is a vision map that came out of it. So the themes were, in terms of natural resources, preserve what is uniquely Brevard, economic prosperity, leverage what is uniquely Brevard, and quality of life, provide choices, and find balance, and the vision reflected that theme. But we needed to get verification of that, so we took the vision back out to the public and said, give us feedback on the vision. How well does it actually address those major themes in terms of economic prosperity, natural resources, and how people live and travel? And we found that overwhelming number of people, 74% for economic prosperity, 65% for natural resources, and 70% for live and travel, supported the vision. So we knew we had something to work with and move forward with. So that's the type of, every, every time we get engaged in a scenario planning, visioning process, the way we put it together is customized based on the issues and the aspirations and what the intent is. So, but that, using the place types with data behind those place types, the data would be the total number of residents, total number of jobs, the fiscal impacts of each one of those place types. You know, how much does it cost to provide services, both the capital and operating costs that Mike talked about earlier? How much revenue do you get back from those different places? So all of that will be associated with these place types, so people will be informed as they start understanding what place types they want to use to move forward with. That's the question of what, then you get into the question of where. And you give people a map, and they start playing with the map and telling us where they think development should happen, these place types should happen within the region as they move forward. So the vision and strategic framework are really, as I said at the outset, are there to help answer what and where questions. What environmental habitats are valuable and where are they? What economic development clusters should we grow and attract, and where will they locate? What kinds of neighborhoods will residents live in and where will they be located? And with those where and what questions, then you, you're able to start addressing the how questions. So now that you understand where and what environmental habitat you're going to protect, how will you do that? What strategies will you use to do that? As Mike mentioned at the very beginning, how will infrastructure and services be provided to new centers and neighborhoods now that you know what and where they are? So that is, that is, those are the key questions that we would, we would like to answer in the process.
Good morning. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. As I've been here a couple of times over the last year, sharing about some of the work that we have been doing, looking at the big picture in long-term growth and looking out to 2045, and that our community is projected to need to accommodate 714,000 more people and 404,000 more jobs. We've looked at, in conjunction with the MPOs across the region, several scenarios of how we might approach that growth. The one on the left showing the big-picture trend, if we were to continue to develop at the development pattern that we have over the last years. The one in the middle focusing some of that growth along some of our major transportation corridors and interstate highways. And then finally, the one on the right focusing all of our growth in redevelopment and transit-oriented development. We've, we shared that with the public and got some big-picture input, and have a very conceptual county-wide vision and some core tenants, like preserving existing neighborhoods and valuing our environmental assets. People want to see more transportation choices, and they want us to address safety, and they'd like to see discouraging outward expansion of growth and focusing on more and better downtowns or downtown-type places. So this provides some, some really big-picture concepts to sort of frame the work that can come after this, that as Chris described, that could begin to give some sort of meat on the bones, so to speak, to the what, the where, and the how are we strategically going to accomplish some of these big-picture goals. For example, the, the vision map is sort of blobby. I haven't come up with a better word for it than that. But the work that we did in Brandon, building on the community plan, began to take that large red blob and hone down on what are actually the specific areas that could support redevelopment and where that might be the most viable from an economic standpoint. So doing that kind of work across the entire unincorporated county could really give us a framework that would knit a lot of these pieces together and give us very clear direction on some of the pieces that are needed to complete a substantive update to your comprehensive plan. So that was my portion of the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions, but we're very excited to partner with you all on this effort.
So that completes our presentation and opened up the board discussion. I'll just say that the thing that appealed to us about the work that Chris did is that there were a lot of what we thought similarities. Large tracts of land at the North Ranch, where we have a huge unincorporated area, a lot of common themes, starting the process by looking at the environment and agricultural needs rather than starting on the other end and looking at the industrial, commercial, retail, residential needs. But it, but it really was focused on how do you harmonize all those things in a way that does a couple of things. It, it provides some sense of predictability, which is, is a good thing, because for, whether it's environmental protection, whether it's economic development, whether it's residential development, to entice the kinds of results that you want, to entice all of the players to show up and, and take risks and invest capital, you know, businesses like to have a sense of predictability. They also want to have a sense of flexibility in terms of how the marketplace will move over a long periods of time. But they accomplished it by identifying with stakeholder meetings, with the community identifying where those nodes, where the preference was for those nodes to develop, and then created a sector plan for the entire area that provided the framework of predictability. So even though that was a private venture and a private sector plan, there's no reason why there couldn't be a public sector plan as well. It does provide a framework that stitches together the board's needs, the community needs, it provides predictability and flexibility, and it creates a legacy for many, many years to come that, that really is focused on sustainability at all levels, environmental, economic, quality of life, and finances. So that's why we thought it was worth bringing to you. Again, it's not a recommendation, it's just opening up a space for discussion. So with that, I'll open it up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. We do have some commissioners who have some comments or questions. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to start by asking some questions of Mr. Sinclair, if you'd be so kind. One thing that piqued my interest or made my antenna go up in your presentation was you mentioned Four Corners. Is that the Four Corners as in southeast Hillsborough, Polk, Hardy, Manatee, where they come together, or is that a different Four Corners?
That is a Four Corners where orange, Osceola...
Never mind, wrong Four Corners. Okay, there's, there's an area out in my district that they refer to as Four Corners.
Oh, I didn't know there was another one.
Good, good. So I noticed in your presentation that, that it included a lot of urban form. But I, you know, I have some areas in my district with, with a rich agricultural heritage, and, and to some degree, I'm trying to protect some of that. And I have citizens, of course, that are on board and want to see that lifestyle protected. So, so I have a question, but, but I think you've answered it with, with the where piece, the where question in your presentation. So with the question being, you know, I would assume the question is, where do you place that urban-form development?
Right.
So, so then by default, the, the remaining areas is where you might have an opportunity to protect a rural or agricultural type of, of a living choice? Am I, am I getting that right?
You are, you are. And just, let me add to that just briefly. As people are playing with these maps, and it's a fascinating thing to see them actually work with the maps, they're going to be tallying up, they're going to be given a target they need to hit in terms of accommodating population and employment growth. So as they use more intense development types and they place those down, that accommodates more of the population in certain areas, which leaves more areas open for rural preservation and protection. So there's, there's a quantitative side to this, and people get to see sort of in, in action how things balance out across the different places.
Wonderful. Mike, Mike and I, Mike Merrill and I have talked at, at length about, you know, my interests, and I'm, I'm primarily, more than anything, interested in Sense of Place. Now, obviously, when you talk about Sense of Place, other factors come into play, like environmental factors, transportation factors. But, but in, in thinking about Sense of Place, I for one am very interested in street-level form. It's, that's been discussed. And it also piqued my interest when you talked about you having some experience in Brevard County. So I've had the opportunity to do a little bit of, of research on some street-level form policies, if you will, in Palm Bay, specifically with the Florida vernacular architectural style.
Yeah.
It looks to me, just at a 30,000-foot view, a high level, that it's been successful. If, if I'm reading things correctly, you know, they've had a Walmart that's been willing to, to comply with those agricultural, with those architectural styles, some other commercial buildings. It, it certainly does not seem that it's been a hindrance to growth for them. Do you have any experience with, with that architectural requirement piece in Palm Bay and whether or not it's been successful, or?
I, I don't. But what I will say is that as we, when we put these place types together, and that... But what I will say is that as we, when we put these place types together, and that will be something we'll be doing in concert with staff and others, we will let people see, you know, it's not just sort of how the lay of the land looks, but, you know, this is the architectural style that we have in mind. And so they get to pick, as they're, you know, deciding which place types they want to put on the map, what makes sense to them and what they like. What, you know, Sense of Place means different things to different people, so this gives them an opportunity to look at a palette of things, and they decide which ones they want to use. And we can certainly deal with architectural features as we put that palette together.
Great. Something I mentioned here at the dais, I bet it's been two or three years ago now at this point, and, you know, I got a lot of looks like I'm crazy, right? But I've also had the opportunity to read up on Taylor County's plan. And people were looking at me like I'm crazy because, you know, Hillsborough and Taylor, you know, there's just no comparison. However, I can make an argument that, you know, I have some areas in my district in the far east and southeastern quadrants of this county that, you know, are like a microcosm of a Taylor County. Do you have any familiarity with their plan or what they've done up there?
I do not, no.
Okay. That's something that I'd like, you know, for staff to revisit, you know, to see if we can just borrow from that, you know, at least on a micro level for certain areas of the county. So I'm going to close. I see other commissioners in the queue. I'm going to close by taking a shot at asking staff for a few things, but I know they're going to be looking for consensus. So I'd love to hear the other commissioners as you make your comments sort of weigh in as to whether or not you'd like to see this. But staff graciously arranged, and again, this has been a couple of years now, for a field trip. I went on a field trip with staff, mini-bus load of us, you know, a vanload of us, down to Collier County to look at the Ave Maria development. And we learned about a point system down there where the developer can accumulate, and I'm oversimplifying this, okay, this is a 30,000-foot view of this, but the developer down there can accumulate points by preserving green space. They get the highest number of points for preserving ecologically sensitive land, you know, ranchland, improved pasture, you know, it's maybe a different level of points, you know, all the way down to row crop land, which would be the smallest, the lowest number of points. And they can use those points for entitlements, which is what they use for the Ave Maria development. So in learning about that, you know, I don't know that it necessarily fully translates into what we might do here, but I'd love to see staff make a presentation to the board at one of our board meetings to talk about just that concept of a point system, but perhaps with some broader potential applications, if it's possible. So, for example, could you use a point system like we saw in Collier County to create a rural district? Could you use a point system? Is there a scenario where points can be traded between different planning areas? You know, I don't know the answers to those questions, but if there's consensus, I'd sure love to have staff present to us what we learned there and what some additional applications might be. The second thing I'd like to ask about, again, if we have consensus, is I've always had a high level of interest in the Little Manatee South planning area. And I'm looking at Commissioner Smith because I know that you live down there and that you were intimately involved in their, in their community plan. Little Manatee South, the planning area that the county calls Little Manatee South, just to paint a picture, is bordered on the north by the Little Manatee River, the bay on the west, the Manatee County line to the south, and 301 to the east. So it includes the community of Sundance. Of course, we have the state park down there, the Cockroach Bay Aquatic Preserve, some other ELAP lands as well. The Little Manatee South planning area is around 23,000 acres, and as I understand it, around 6,900 of those acres are developable. There's a formalized group of large landowners in the area called the Uzita Shores Group. And of course, the Mormon Church, and you touched on them in your presentation, they have about 58% of the land-owning, land holdings down there. And, you know, there's been a pretty strong push for quite some time to usher in, you know, some development down there. And I'm concerned about, you know, how that development would look with respect to environmental concerns, the community plan, which a lot of work and effort has gone into. I certainly, you know, have some close contacts in the area with advocates, one of which is Ralph Greenley, Commissioner Smith. I believe you know Mr. Greenley out of the Sundance community. He has emailed me recently, you know, in light of the fact that there's this, the push is heating back up for development in the area. And he's floated the idea of putting together a small working group that, you know, might include some commissioners and some stakeholders. Certainly, you know, he's asked me to be a part of that working group, something I've been keeping my eye on for quite some time. The entire planning area is in my district, of course, I was raised down in that area as well. But Commissioner Smith, he's floated the idea of you being a part of a potential working group as well because of your ties to the area and all the work that you've done there. So, you know, I'm thinking that I would like the idea of creating a working group. You know, certainly, you know, I'd like to sit on it. Commissioner Smith, I'd love to have you sit on it. I have a couple of advocates from the community that I have in mind, one of which is Mr. Greenley. And of course, I think it would be appropriate to have a representative from Uzita Shores in the group as well. So I'm thinking about, you know, maybe a five-person working group, including you and I. So I'd love to bring an agenda item to our next meeting on April 17th, asking for that, but I know staff is, well, actually, on this one, more so, it's me looking for consensus because candidly, if I bring an item to the board to ask for the working group, I want to have a sense as to whether or not there's support. So I'll close with that and look forward to the discussion on the couple of things I've asked for, the presentation on the point system and the concept of the working group for Little Manatee South.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Be of a mind for the sunshine, Locke, you're talking about two commissioners out there.
I've vetted it with Ms. Beck, and she's, if she'd like to weigh in, she certainly said we can...
It would make it a notice-sunshine meeting. So there would be minutes and notice for these meetings if there's two commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. So starting with Mr. Merrill's initial introduction where you pointed out that as we sprawl or, you know, grow out, there, we have to consider the cost of infrastructure and the capital cost of that infrastructure plus the forever maintenance cost of that infrastructure. And I just wanted to point out that the flip side of that is, too, that those costs, you know, putting, choosing to put infrastructure farther and farther out is choosing not to use those resources to put more multimodal transit options in the urban core. So that's the big-picture transportation choice that we make if we grow out rather than staying compact with smart growth in transit in our urban core. I don't know why we were presented with this large mega-regional project between Orlando and Melbourne that's kind of promoting the Deseret Farms project out there when, you know, coincidentally, we have this Deseret Farms push to develop outside our urban service area in our rural area in this part of the county that, you know, we are concerned about so many things there. The plan that we were shown, and I don't have any questions for you if you want to take a seat.
Okay, sorry.
The plan that we were shown, it was a plan to convert apparently viable, economically functioning, feasible farmland, a huge piece of it far from the metropolitan areas of Orlando and coastal Melbourne, in the middle where there was this, all this environmentally valuable land. And so Deseret Farms made this push to plop down some urban area there. I hope that doesn't have a whole lot to do with us moving forward. I would rather see some example of new innovative smart growth. I'm sure there's other places doing concentrated retrofitting their urban areas to accommodate the growth. We were told in that presentation that growth was driving that transformation of this great green area in the middle of nowhere into a city, however nice that city might be. And I'm sure other areas have grown a lot and found ways to accommodate that growth in their urban areas and to retrofit transit options to do that and still preserve the rural lifestyles, the semi-rural lifestyles, the suburban areas that give our county this wonderful variety, palette of lifestyle choices, and protect farmland close to home, which is, by the way, an economically viable piece of our economy. So, you know, I'm dismayed about the choice of the project that we were shown. I would certainly if, you know, let me say that Ave Maria is an example of things that, and probably this Deseret Farms thing we were shown in the middle of the country is, can be planned to be a wonderful place, you know, wonderful little city with new urbanism, walkable, bikeable features and architectural features that are really pretty. But if it's paved over some rural environmental lands and farmlands, that's not the place for it to happen. So that has to be considered, and also the timing of it. Certainly, you know, there may be a time, 50, 100 years from now, when our growth reaches a point we can't contain it anymore and we have to develop more of the rural area. But for as long as possible, there's a lot of people in this county and this commissioner who wants to try to preserve the variety and the rural lifestyle and the green space and environmentally sensitive areas that we have, and look to something different than what Florida has, the mistakes that Florida has made in the last 100 years. I mean, we can look at our history and say, oh, well, this is, and this is part of the presentation we were shown. Here's how Florida grows. You do these nodes this far apart, and then you put these nodes 14 miles apart, and then you put these nodes seven miles apart. Yeah, that's what we've been doing. It's, there's a lot of smart minds that now feel like that was a big mistake, that it was a costly mistake, and that we've lost a lot of, a lot of things that were good about Florida in doing that. So I want to see if we can do something different here. But, you know, saying all that, I'm certainly open to, I know that Commissioner White has a lot of the same values that I'm talking about. And so certainly, if there is going to be a working group of that area south of the river, I would very much like to be a part of it, and I think we could have some very productive discussions there as far as, you know, what's the timing of that development and how best to preserve what's really precious in Hillsborough County, what's some of the last remaining areas of Hillsborough County that we want to preserve. So that's all, that's all I have for now.
May I respond, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Well, I'm sorry that that's the message you received because this certainly wasn't what we intended. So where we started with is Melissa's comments. There are 700,000 people coming here. The urban, our urban centers are not going to accommodate 700,000 people, not even on a good day. So the reality is, we can make two choices. We can make the choice of a moratorium and stop growth, or we can deal with 700,000 people in a way that takes into account exactly what you're saying. So what Chris described to you is not, we started the presentation by saying, this is not a recommendation. What I said is that the thing that appealed to us is they started with, they started the work focused on environmental agricultural uses. They didn't start with focusing on urban sprawl. That's what appealed to us. But the fact that we have 700,000 people coming is something we can't ignore. The city of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace cannot accommodate that. There just isn't a physical possibility...
Five when? 700,000 people...
In the next 15 years. 15 years it's going to go like that. That's why we wanted to present something to you that accommodates and focuses on environmental protection but doesn't ignore the reality that we have, we can let things grow as they're going to grow. There's a, but we have, we have urban centers already growing up in Brandon and in South County. And so our purpose here was to say that, yes, let's preserve the environmental lands, let's preserve agricultural lands, but let's plan in a way, in an innovative way, in a way that will accommodate all these people in denser clusters with transit and walkable communities. So this is kind of a hybrid of an urban center and a suburban center with more density, more compact, with transit options, with walkable communities, that's harmonized with all of the environmental benefits that we have in this county. That's why we brought it, not to do more of the same and not to say we take what they did and superimpose it. It's the concept of how you deal with significantly, with significant growth. That's really the reason we brought it, so.
Be of a mind for folks, when you're talking about that type of people moving here in 15 years, that's over 45,000 people moving here a year. 45,000. Commissioner Merrill, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been really interesting to sit here and listen to the presentation and to hear the comments from Commissioner White and Commissioner Smith because it's interesting. My district used to look like yours. Because it's interesting, my district used to look like yours with ag and stuff, and because of purchases back early in 2000, it's developed. And so I can appreciate what you say, and I do thank you because we do have to preserve. Our residents want good neighborhoods, strong neighborhoods, and they want to preserve a certain quality of life. So like what the gentleman has said, he, what, he's trying to help us think about how can we do that and accept 700,000 people. It's really daunting. My question is more about community plans because what's happened is, is neighborhoods, in an effort to preserve, we have community plans which like almost have iron walls around them, and the communities are saying, don't do anything more, or don't do anything that's not in this plan. So how do we get those residents who have a preconceived notion, sometimes negative about development, about, you know, water and different things, how do we transform that into a more modern version of neighborhood planning? I guess that's what I would call it. Because community plans, in my opinion, are getting a little bit outdated. They were good for the last 20 years, but they're not going to be good for the next 20 years. And because we're going to be in constant struggles and fights with neighborhoods to try and move them to accept the 700,000 people. And I want to help my residents, I want to protect them and advocate for them, but how do we get there?
Yeah, that's a good question. So community plans are getting outdated. They served a purpose, but the piece that was missing in community plans was that there was never an extension of the plan and a strategy on how to pay for any of it. So they kind of baked half the cake, and that frustrated people because they said, well, now we have a community plan, but we continue to hear, when we getting our stuff? Well, the problem is, there was never any funding piece with it. So what Chris was describing in the spaceport example was what we thought is the vehicle, to start with community plans, but let's take a fresh look at it, let the community tell us now what they want. Time has passed, things have happened, whether they're good or bad, it's not a judgment. We just, we have to live in the present. We have what we have, maybe it didn't turn out the way we, any of us wanted or expected, but we got what we got. So how do we harmonize community plans and the values of those plans with what we got? The only way to do that, in my mind, is to go back out in a structure that Chris is suggesting and involve the community, but not just focusing on little, as you said, walled-in spaces, because you can't do that anymore. You can't just say, you know, we're going to put a wall around our community and that's it because, again, 700,000 people coming. We want to make better choices about the kind of growth that we're going to get. And it means thinking about, yes, smaller communities, but thinking about how they fit into a larger quilt of an unincorporated area that's going to grow of its own accord, and we don't want that to happen. We don't want that to happen again. I think the model they used is one that's tried and true. It was community-driven, wasn't staff saying, this is what you should do, wasn't the planning commission saying what you should do. It was a framework for how do you take all of those things that you're talking about, that Commissioner Smith is talking about, that Commissioner Kemp stands for, and that Commissioner White stands for, that you all stand for, and try and find a way to harmonize it.
I agree. So just a quick follow-up. So I had someone in my office the other day, I know because I talked to Ms. Scarsus about it. Wy Mama wants to redo their community plan. They want us to make an investment in that, and I can appreciate it. Ruskin's going through the same thing, Gibsonton. Everybody in South County is now like, they've got their antennas up. Okay, we need to do something to protect our neighborhood, so we have to update these plans. And I'm just, I think, I don't, how many community plans do we have now? Twenty-two. Okay. Maybe you need to get individuals from each one of those community plans who were leaders of those plans together in a room, make this presentation or something similar, and try to see where the common ground is. But I don't know how, it's going to be very difficult. You've got Keystone to Wy Mama, two totally different communities. I know, because I live it every day in my district. I don't know how you do this, but I would say, we got to come up with a plan to figure out how to harmonize these community plans into what we want to do with development.
I'm not going to speak for Chris, but I imagine you ran into the same kind of dynamic in doing the work that you've done. It's not peculiar to Hillsborough that you would have many different points of view, many different interests, and this seemed to work.
Yeah, and that is true. There are a lot of different perspectives out there. But, you know, if, as you get people engaged in the conversation and they start talking with each other, that's when the magic starts happening. I can't explain it any better than that, but that's when the magic starts happening.
So I guess that's what I'm saying. At some point, we got to get them all together and figure out what the common ground is so we can move forward and help guide us, because we're the instruments for them.
If we don't do something soon, watch the legislature. Watch the legislature. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. It actually helped create a framework for, I think, our conversation to see how you went through analyzing a more open space to creating a complete community with the plan associated with it. Our challenge is, is we already have a lot of infrastructure in place when it comes to housing and roads and places that already exist. So I'd like to sort of recognize that with that, taking one step back and taking a look at the first step you proposed, which was to look at the environmental framework, what resources are already there, what areas we want to protect in order to maybe suggest that we don't move into those environmentally sensitive areas with our community plan or our growth plans. So that we at least know, we're not going to go there unless there's some specific reason that a community that would prefer large rural areas, or there's farmers, or there's agricultural resources there that clearly need to be protected, but also serve the environmental protection needs. So for example, you know, much of what we see, for example, in Keystone, as an example, you know, a lot of those areas are big horse farms, are big areas, big, people that like having a lot of room around them, and yet we keep building big roads that drive through there that, you know, from other areas or other counties that continually promote or project that we would make more, you know, more development in that area. Well, every time we do that, it just brings more people, and it brings more congestion, and it brings more resistance from a community that clearly says, you know, we want to stay rural. We'll run into the same problem probably over in Thonote-Sassie if that area starts to see that same kind of development. So identifying those, that environmental sensitivity areas, I think one is an important part. Like the one slide that you showed, you know, where you had the environmental corridors. We need to see that. I think it's an important part of what we do forward. We need to see what that looks like in Hillsborough County. And look to preserve those areas or protect those areas or resist developing certain type of urban, say, areas when looking at where our roads go and where our transit resources go. The quadrant centers obviously need to be clearly identified in where we want to go and where they already are. Because that's a clear place, because when we look at the place types that we're going to be considering, again, we have existing communities that are already in place. We have communities that have community plans that are tired of being ignored when it comes to our overall plans. We've seen over the last four or five years, you know, historic communities that are saying, yeah, you're growing here, you're using transportation, you know, focused growth plans that are destroying our community, and we, the result is, we don't get what we need. So I think it's going to be important finding a balance between what people are looking for and the way of place types in their community plans, and then how we update those community plans to meet those goals. Previously, our land use development strategies has accepted, what I've complained about since I got here and for decades, is community development or housing structures that don't create the connectivity that we need and oftentimes make transit as a way, or transportation planning as a way of helping people get around safely compromised. As I mentioned, if we don't start going back to what has worked for centuries, which is a grid format versus this sort of loop thing that we've decided to do to maximize the number of houses, we have to find a balance between how many houses we need or what type of housing we need and how we connect communities. Suburban desires or suburban communities obviously can still be designed in such a way that they are connected to each other. And I think that's a critical part of whatever we look forward to in our zoning in our comprehensive plan, that we go back to holding the line on that particular design because it's created some inefficiencies that we're going to have difficulty fixing because there's a lack of connectivity in many of our communities that don't allow for the, you know, walking to your grocery store like you do even in a small town, where it's easy to get around without having to get onto these major collectors that are causing huge angst in our communities. The reason many of these community plans and community advocates are screaming right now is because they've had no choice but to get on a major artery as a way of getting around in their communities, and now they're sitting in traffic for hours, ruining their quality of life. So we do need to kind of make sure we find a balance between where we want to grow and how we design those communities, or at least set the framework for those communities so that in the long run, we don't exacerbate some of the other problems that we have. That may also improve our ability to provide the services we need, the stormwater, the infrastructure, the water resources. But without identifying our transit and transportation resources and what our plan looks like as we develop, and we now have some resources, or hopefully will have resources for investing in transit, because as was described in the MPO meeting on Tuesday, it's been a busy week, we can't road ourselves into solving the problem, given that we've got this many people moving here. We have to find ways of helping people utilize alternative methods of getting around, whether that be walking, biking, you know, transit or otherwise. So I think identifying our major transit and transportation plan as part of this environmental framework look at, and then identifying our quadrants will be some of the core pieces that I'd like to see in where we go with this. Then it's a lot easier to develop the zoning because we have a framework that we know we can work with. We're not going to go to this area, not because we don't want to respect property rights or because, you know, we, it's growing in that area. It's because it's environmentally unsound to go in that particular area and doesn't meet our overall plan if we're looking to protect those environmental resources as a priority. That helps our water quality. It helps our, the water intrusion that we're starting to see along the bay, which is causing some problems. We talked yesterday about septic tanks. You know, there's, by not addressing those corridors, we're going to find ourselves trying to fix problems we've created by not recognizing how valuable those resources are. So I'm actually looking forward to the conversation. I do appreciate, it was not exactly what I would, I think we're trying to accomplish, but I do appreciate the framework of which you described it because it helps focus on maybe some of the primary steps we need to consider moving forward with our land use. Thank you.
Mr. Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just jot it down a few notes here as I've been listening to the discussion. Start out by saying, candidly, I don't know what the appropriate framework is for us to consider or to start to set the stage for the dialogue, but I do want to echo the comments from Mr. Merrill on what he said a few moments ago, because I think back to a workshop, it was last year, would have been the previous board, and I asked Melissa about how are we going to accommodate the future growth? And she said at the time, and if I'm incorrect, please come up and correct me, but she said, de facto, we're either going to have to change our land use policies outside of the urban service area or dramatically increase our densities within the urban service area. It's easy, and here's my frustration, is that it's easy for us to say we don't want urban sprawl. But it's more difficult to accept the increase in the infill development. Bottom line is, you can't have it both ways. And for so many years, we've continued to go along that path. Time and time again, this board has elected to either deny or to approve far less what is legally allowable whenever there's infill development. It happens every single time. There's always neighborhood opposition. This board will either, there'll be a motion to deny, or we will approve far less than what they can legally put there. Not only are there, I think it's important for us to consider, not only are we projecting 700,000 people to come here, but over 400,000 jobs. And so I'm looking at it, not to minimize the residential component, but I'm looking more toward the economic and job creation portion of this, and how are we going to accommodate that? Yeah, so again, candidly, I don't know, I think this is an excellent start, a framework for us to begin the dialogue. I was pleased to see that our guiding principles were included in here. I think we need to start with our guiding principles, and we certainly need to consider the nexus between economic development and transportation when we continue to define these, either these corridors or these zones or where we want the future commercial development to occur. But that's a, let's don't forget about the 400,000 jobs along with the 700,000 people.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I always find it, we have this dichotomy that happens, and it's, you've got to understand that you're going to have 700,000 people here, and you better put them down as if we have nothing to do with it, as if some force of nature drops them down, and we must accommodate them no matter what. And, you know, and it's this or this. It's never something in between, and that is that we do smart growth. And if we build it, they will come. When you plant plants in the right place and do the right thing, they grow there. If you put in sidewalks in the right places that are, lend themselves to walkability, you get walkable neighborhoods or walkable communities, areas. If you put bicycle lanes in the right place, you get people using them, and they accommodate an infrastructure in place. If you don't have it, no matter what your weather is or whatever, you won't have people that will be riding bicycles feeling safe. If you have transit, but you put it in an area that's not dense, that doesn't attract or serve the right place, you want to put transit in the right places to accommodate, and the same thing goes for how you build communities. And you don't, you know, I just, I don't accept the fact that we have to do whatever, that in fact, you know, you mentioned the principles, well, we're, this, the principles were mentioned at the top, but they don't drive the plan. In fact, what we heard is growth and development is the driver. That's what we heard. I think we need to turn that around. Quality of life, fiscal sustainability, and economic prosperity should be the drivers. That's what we say are our principles. There's five, but those three should be the drivers, not growth and development. We should be looking at quality of life, fiscal sustainability... We should be looking at quality of life, fiscal sustainability, economic prosperity. And I would maintain that, so I want to start with a different framework. I can appreciate setting aside environmental and agricultural lands, although I haven't heard quite how that's done here, but, you know, and I guess, when I hear that, that we're talking about outside the urban service area, I reject the notion that we can't accommodate within the urban service area. I also, I know that there's been times where development has not been, people are upset about the development that comes and that's because we haven't had, in large part, some part, because we haven't had the infrastructure in place to accommodate it because we haven't been doing what should be done. I think our development has been very poor in the past and I don't blame people for saying, don't do that to me because we don't have a road that we can get through. So, I mean, that's something for us to address on the forward and, you know, I want to see that happen. Hillsborough County has urgent needs to address in connection between how we've been growing and the county's fiscal health. There used to be a belief when I was here in 2004, it was a very debatable issue when I was a, a aide for Kathy Castor, so often it was said, development pays for itself. They had a study that came out and decided that development pays for itself. And as I've said, if that were the case, Hillsborough County should be flush with revenue for all of our needs. We're one of the fastest growing places, but that is not true. We know better now that that is not the case. I've been talking with Ms. Garsis for some time about what we can do to analyze how we've grown and how our growth supports and in many ways fails to support our fiscal health as a county. I feel like this framework is a blind one for me because it doesn't give me the background that I need, that I've been asking for about how, what are the economic, the valuable assets we have and our value per acre that we have, which I have really wanted to understand and see that mapped out so that we can duplicate it in, in a way to, to do the things, the quality of life, the fiscal sustainability, the economic prosperity that I think we all want when we, when we build forward to the future and that we need to make a turn towards. We need to understand the economic impact of land use decisions we've made over the years. This is the connection between our development patterns and whether revenue generated by these places will support the costs associated to build and maintain roads, schools, sewer lines, parks, fire stations and provide services to our residents over time. In other words, the county getting a return on investment in the form of revenue to support the places that we have developing, developed. And moving forward, what we can change in terms of policy about how we grow and grow in a fiscally healthy and fit financially sustainable way to ensure that we have adequate revenue to support the places we have in place and the places that will be developed and redeveloped in the future. Many other places in Florida, throughout the country and the world have engaged in this return on investment modeling, which I have been asking for and want to, I, I want very much to have it. I feel like we have to do this in order for me not to be walking in blind and for the community also and to do our jobs responsibly, responsibly. So I'm going to keep pushing for a return on investment modeling that, you know, because I really feel like we need that as an underpinning for how we move forward. I really want to see that happen.
And Commissioner, we did hear you, you know that. We tried to get the firm that you wanted and we couldn't get there. Our procurement director said that if we select them as a sole source, we already had a protest that we would not end up in a good place. We will get you someone, but we're going, as we told you, we're going to have to go through an RFP process.
Right.
That doesn't guarantee we're going to get you the one you want, but I heard you, we'll get it for you and I apologize that we couldn't, but we're not going to, I'm not going to put the county at risk in procurement by making a sole, a sole source that we know is going to be channeled.
I'm not asking, but I'm, I'm saying I want to have a basis for making decisions and policy decisions by having and understanding our return on investment, having that be part of it. We saw where the community here decided that they, they rated what would be best for economic prosperity and of course, they raided the port, you know, in the Canaveral area, but how do, people don't really, the public in general doesn't really know what, what values are there, what they, I don't know. I've been asking, what's our like warehousing policy and what does that bring us, value per acre? I don't understand what it is that we have as a goal to move forward in terms of our development policy. What brings us the best return on investment? What brings us the best economic prosperity? And so I want to have that basis for me so that I'm not walking blind into, into what we do for the future. I want to have policies that are generated by that and other communities are, are getting there with that. And so I really want to see that. I want to know that and understand it as we move forward because otherwise I just feel like we can just make the same mistakes again. And I do, just, I, I, you know, I, again, I want to see us driven by the quality of life of what we have already, our fiscal sustainability and economic prosperity, not just, we have to accommodate growth no matter what. I think we have some role to play in that about how we grow. And so I just reject that we just accommodate no matter what, no matter what comes. And, and I appreciate Commissioner Smith, all the points that you made. I think that those are good points and, and ones that we need to think about moving forward.
Remember, this horse is dead. Let's quit beating it to death, okay? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And I think we do have to think about the economic product of, of our growth management planning and I too would like to see some, some more information about how these decisions and the choices that we make are impacting our economy. I remember back when Bob Hunter was with the Planning Commission, I don't know how, 20, 15, 20 years ago, that, that there was a study called the field study and that study showed what Commissioner Kemp was saying, that each house costs us more in infrastructure than what we're getting back. And that's how we ended up $9 billion in debt on our transportation costs or however many billions, it's been 14 billion is whatever it is, but it's billions of debt. So, and as long as I've been involved in community planning and, and growth management as a citizen activist, I have been hearing 20 years ago, the same argument that X number of people are coming and we've got to make room for them and that's what's driven us. If, if we keep thinking the same way and letting that, those same arguments drive us into the same kind of sprawl idea that we were shown, however pretty it is, however nice we make those new communities into our rural area, we're going to end up still digging ourselves into the hole on transportation and, and doing, spreading out instead of doing transit. So I know you all are hearing from the same citizens that I'm hearing. Every day we get email to all of us from somebody saying, you're doing it wrong. You've made terrible mistakes. It's impacting our quality of life. Everywhere, all of us who just campaigned all over the county heard that from everyone. They want change. They don't want us to still be doing X number of people are coming, so we're going to have to figure out how to keep spreading into the rural area, whatever. They want us to do things differently. And in order to do smart growth, like we've all been promising to do, we've all said, or people up here, the veteran commissioners have said, I know it was done wrong in the past, but you know, that's then, we're, here we are now. Well, here we are now. We've got to do things differently than what we did in the past. And in order to do that, we need this kind of information Commissioner Kemp was talking about, the kind of working groups and community outreach that the, the presentation mentioned and that Commissioner White was talking about. But we also need, like, this little South Sun City Center newspaper showed, they went out and figured out more about what growth is actually coming than we've had information coming. So right just around the intersection of 301 and 674, Vista Palms, 700 homes, it's being built now. South Shore Bay, 2,142 homes. It'll be built in the next five years. Sereno, 728 homes. It'll be built in three years. It's, you know, land is happening now. Valencia Lakes, 1,200 homes. Valencia Del Sol, 600 homes. Orcas at Cypress Creek, 338 homes. Cypress Mill, 900 homes. Shade Tree Apartments, 260 apartments. That is just around 301 and 674. It adds up to 9,010 homes, which is 5% of the 700,000 people coming, right there at that one intersection. And so what I would like to know as we make plans going forward is how much capacity do we actually have? How much have we already promised to, to allow homes and cars and roads? I want to know more about road capacity and home capacity because I was told by an activist 20 years ago, this county, every time we make a zoning decision or a comp plan decision, we look at this small area of the county as if we've put a piece of butcher paper over the map, cut a little hole in it and looked just there. We need more information about the big picture, the capacity. I'd like to see a big map and, and, and figures of how much room and how much is already planned for houses and also, you know, more about when we're looking at each development, how these roads are farther out than just the roads that, on the, on the property, how much capacity the roads have, not just today, but given the 9,000 homes we've already allowed on, that you don't see now. If you go to Google Earth, the aerial view that we're shown when we're approving a development, you're still seeing cow pastures and tomato fields and that's the map that is shown to us with the little red outline of what we're going to look at. It's not showing us the 9,000 homes that are already, that the earth is moving because Google aerial hasn't caught up to that yet. So, thanks.
So Commissioner Smith, that is the analysis that we would undertake, that Chris would undertake. And so I'll go back and I'll apologize that we never intended to take literally what Chris was showing and impose it on the county. The point which we apparently were not successful in making is it's the process. It's not the form of what they did, it's the process of taking a large land mass that's going to change. And I agree, we do have control over it and putting it through a rigorous analysis that looks at capacity, that looks at environmental land, that looks, they talked about creating premium transit in their plan. That's something we need to do as well. So that would be the next step in the process in addition to engaging the community to find out what they think, not just in terms of little isolated pockets, but in terms of the entire, entire area and the entire needs of the county. So that would be, we're not asking for action today, but that would be the next step that we would, we would take, including an analysis of the value that you've asked for, that I asked for. I asked for it two years ago because we have to maximize the value of what we have left and we have to do it in a way that doesn't overwhelm us in terms of cost of service.
Oh, and understand-
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, hold on, hold on. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Mr. Merrill, you, you talked about how, you know, we can no longer sort of look at, at areas as walled off areas, but you know, what, what you and I've talked about before though is that Hillsborough County is incredibly unique and that we only have three municipalities and we have this large swath of unincorporated county. And it's, it's oftentimes municipalities that do things that make an area special. And, and what we have is an awful lot of communities in this county that have nothing more than a zip code or traditional boundary lines. They don't, they don't have that geopolitical boundary around them, if you will. So oftentimes, this county commission is tasked with doing things that, that, that a city council would otherwise be doing. So I do respect the community plans for that reason. To the, to the extent that some of them may need, you know, to be dusted off and maybe reevaluated, you know, I think we should engage the community in that process, but I'm a big proponent of those community plans. I'd also like to get a briefing on where we are on the municipal overlay type concept. I know we've been sort of talking about it and we haven't been able to sort of catch up, but you know, I can think of one community in particular, that's not in my district, by the way. I was approached at, at random by this individual, but I know there's one community in particular that's sort of ready to go out of the gates and at least explore the option. So, you know, I'd like to know where we are on that. Mrs. Ornita, I'm going to invite you up to the, to the hot seat here to, to, to piggyback on what Commissioner Kemp was talking about with respect to, you know, we're, we're not going to have 700,000 people show up on the proverbial doorstep of, of county center saying, zone us a home, right? So it's, it's, it's fair to say that, that the number of people that, that end up in Hillsborough County in the next 20 years, 30 years, you name it, at least on some level, that's a policy decision on, on the part of the county commission. We could make a policy decision to accommodate 350,000 or 400,000 or 500,000, you name the number, but, but if the land use isn't there to support 700,000, I mean, it's clearly a policy decision in my mind.
Absolutely. I think there are policy and investment decisions that both you and the cities will make that will drive where and how quickly some of that population growth and employment growth occurs. And what we have evaluated is sort of in that one trend scenario, what if we don't change our policies? If we don't, if we don't change the way we develop, could happen with 700,000 people coming here and 400,000 more jobs, it would cause us to have to sprawl outward. That's not a foregone conclusion. We have the opportunity to change and reframe that, but we need our, we need the direction and our plan to reflect that. So you have the tools on Tuesdays at the land use meeting to, to follow that plan and, and your decision making.
And, and what I'm about to say is a conversation for another day, but at a high level, when I hear 700,000 people, 400,000 jobs, that sounds like it's jobs for those new 700,000 people. And what I'm more interested in is getting people that already live here to work, people that are struggling. You know, I, I, I think we're behind the eight ball with respect to average wages, average salary. I don't know, I don't have the number in front of me, but I certainly think so. Yeah, so. Okay, well, that's, that's-
That's not true.
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've-
That's a conversation for another day.
Yeah, it's a conversation for another day, but, but just, just, you know, that's what I'm interested in, is for the people that, that, that are having a tough time here today, that, that we have economic development policy that gets them to work. Thank you, Ms. Ornita. I really appreciate that. I'm, I'm just going to close very briefly by saying that I, I didn't hear any opposition to the Little Manatee South Working Group concept. Commissioner Smith, I think, would, would agree to serve on it. So I'm going to bring an agenda item to the next meeting and I didn't hear any opposition to a presentation on a point system, so I'm going to consider staff directed to, to do that as well. Let's not, let's not focus too much though on Ave Maria and Ms., Ms. Beck, there'll be a legal aspect to this as well. The best, the way that I can explain it is that I'd like to see if we can do a TDR-like process, but not with real entitlements, with points instead. Because when people are given the real entitlements, they're just going to develop, right? So if you want to, if you want to create a rural area, say in East County, and we've identified nodes for growth like Highway 60 or I-4- for growth, like Highway 60 or I-4, maybe there's a scenario where some type of points can be traded between the planning areas to steer growth, you know, where it makes more sense with respect to our resources and infrastructure needs. So, that's the type of thing I'm looking about, looking at, not so much exactly what Ave Maria's done. My biggest takeaway from there is not so much what Ave Maria looks like in terms of form, but that they are using a point system. So, I know out of the gates is a starting point, that you can do things with point systems, and that's where I'd like to go with this.
Commissioner Merrill, you recognize?
Thank you. Very quickly, and I did forget to thank Mr. Sinclair for his presentation, but I wanted to ask you, because you didn't mention schools in your visionary process, was that a part of what you did? We're having discussions here in Hillsborough County about school siting and, you know, with the growth, because I do think our school district is struggling with, you know, getting schools where the growth is.
Yeah, and that's, you know, again, this process would answer the what and where questions of schools, and so, let's start with the what question. Schools in urban settings have a different format footprint that should be considered, not necessarily that they have to be done that way, but that's the what question, what format would the schools take at all levels? Then the where question is, and that's gonna be defined by how the community sees the where question being answered, how they answer the where question themselves. That will give us the insights about schools, about all the other services that need to be provided as well. So, yes, that's part and parcel of the where and what questions that need to be answered. Then you can get on to the how question, I think, that's critically important.
Okay, thank you. And I know, Mr. Chair, you recommended that we do a workshop on schools. I would like to, and I can bring it up then, but I'd like to bring it up now, I do think we need to have more of a formal process with the planning commission, the school district, and county staff. I definitely think we need a formal process where everybody is meeting regularly to discuss this and work on it, and I don't know if I can ask you to do this now, or I need to bring an issue back as an agenda item, but I've been thinking long and hard about this, and I think it's just time that, and we should start it sooner than later.
Well, you did ask us to schedule a joint meeting of the school board and you all, which is scheduled for April 19th, I think, but-
Can't remember.
Anyway, it's later in April, and that'll be upstairs with, actually, the chambers hosting it, but it's to have this conversation, to begin this conversation.
Well, I hope you all will agree with me that that absolutely has to take place, for us to be able to kind of address some of these issues, especially with charter schools. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill, that meeting on April 19th, the luncheon between us, the school board, and the chamber, we're gonna go above and beyond that meeting concerning the motion I made yesterday, am I correct?
Concerning-
Because the motion I made yesterday was for us to have a meeting with the school board, our board, you, and the superintendent, and Mr., is it Morris?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, this is above and beyond. This, I think, was originally Commissioner Kemp's motion a couple meetings ago, it was, came out of the workshop we had on school impact fees, and you asked, or I thought that's what it was. Yeah, that was it, and you asked us at that time to have the meeting of the two boards to talk about school siting, talk about safety and so forth, so what your motion would be in addition to that, yes?
Addition to meeting?
Addition, yes, correct, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, my request is more on the, actually, development process with the planning commission. Would that come up at this meeting? Because the planning commission would not. I guess we'd have to ask the planning commission to attend that meeting, as well as our county development staff, development services staff. Great, thanks.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
And in line with that, part of what I was thinking about earlier is that we are in the process of addressing not only the environmental impacts, but the economic strength of this whole region and where it's gonna go. The comments earlier about we are gonna grow with this many people coming here and this many jobs is a function of what our private industry, for the large part, and what we invest in our community, and what attracts people to move here. So, understanding, you know, what industries are looking to move here, where job centers actually already exist, and what that economic investment by private enterprises is doing in our area is a key point. You know, recently, I spent a little bit more time than I usually do in Plant City, and the number of businesses they're bringing into that area, they're actively looking to bring various different types of industries, not necessarily the high tech that we see that may be occurring in downtown Tampa area, but different types of technologies that are coming there that are actually providing opportunities and jobs in that particular community, and they're trying to keep their community inside the sort of Plant City area. As that continued, investment continues, we're gonna see more and more pressure for affordable housing in that particular area, and more and more ideas for where we put housing for the people that are working in those job centers. But, you know, one of the things that we have on our agenda, I'm not sure if it's been scheduled as of yet, was a conversation on impact fees. How do we pay for this? And looking at all of them as a whole, so that we have an infrastructure funding mechanism that actually works, given this growth. Where are we with getting that budget conversation started? Because I know we've got a schedule, but we, I thought we had a budget workshop scheduled for yesterday, but obviously, that didn't happen. Where are we with that conversation on bringing, because the return on investment is a key issue, and if we're gonna be looking at what we're doing with a coordinated impact fee plan that might include, you know, zoning provisions on this point system kind of deal, we really kind of need to know where we are with that, as far as what it actually costs for us to build in these areas as we develop these strategies.
School impact fees or other impact fees?
All of them.
Oh, yeah, there's a mobility fee workshop coming up later this month. There is a fire impact fee coming back, I think, in May.
So, we're, I thought we were gonna do a workshop where we addressed basically how they all work and interrelate first, before we, are these workshops?
Yes, they're workshops, yeah.
All right. I was just under the impression that we would try to look at them in a coordinated manner, so we're not playing whack-a-mole with where the money's coming from to build our communities.
Well, so partly, some mobility fees can only be used for capital, other fees can be used for operating. We will have a workshop scheduled later in May to look at other fees, but mobility fees are a particular type of impact fee that don't really relate to the other fees, they're just, they pay for capital, and we did talk about school impact fees, fire impact fees as well, is they're kind of an animal of their own accord. We are gonna bring back, I think, at a regular meeting, the study for development review fees and planning commission fees, with a recommendation to increase those. I don't think that's in April, I think that's in May, the first meeting in May, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
I just wanted to tell Mike real quick that Megan just sent me a message that we're already on for next Thursday on the municipal overlay thing.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
Ms. Garcia, next up.
Commissioners, if I might, I think, given the conversation about population and population projections, the planning commission has done a lot of work looking at those numbers, and I think as we move forward, probably it is most important to identify what those look like and what they've been identifying. Some of it, as Melissa has said, has been done in accord with the MPOs of Pinellas and Pasco, but as well, the planning commission itself, to facilitate some of the long-range transportation planning, has looked at population projections. So, Melissa, I think it is, the time is ripe to bring that piece back to this board, because without that context, I think a lot of this conversation is difficult to manage in terms of where the board, where the board's policy direction would be on that topic. So, I might suggest that a workshop conversation on population projections and the work that the planning commission has done is the next step.
All right. I have the closing remarks of what the agenda says. I didn't know about that, but it does. Let me thank Mr. Merrill and staff for putting this workshop on. Mr. Sinclair, thank you very much for your presentation, and Mrs. Ornita, thank you very much for your presentation, and Mr. Merrill has basically said, you know, what the concept and his thought process and staff thought process was with this presentation. It was not to look at how we would be growing in the area that, and the mechanism that Mr. Sinclair put forth, but to give us a wide picture of what's happening and what we may be looking at. Commissioner White hit it on the head, we only have three municipalities in this county, and about a million people right now live in unincorporated Hillsborough County. So, this board has to wherewithal to look at how well we have balanced growth, where it is, and how it grows, and you have the opportunity to do that for a long period of time to come. Some of you just came on this board, and you may be here another eight to 10 years. Some of us are gonna be leaving pretty soon, and be watching from afar, like me, maybe. So, you, we as a board, with the citizens of this county, have the wherewithal and the mechanism to determine how we have balanced growth, where we have balanced growth, and how we get jobs here for the citizens we have right now, and some of those citizens that are coming. We cannot put our hands, bury our hands in the sand and realize throughout the process is that they're not coming, they're coming, and we're gonna have to make sure we look at how well we have that growth for them to come here. We don't wanna look like Houston, Texas, if you ever been in Houston, Texas is a mess. And we wanna, we gotta have jobs for these folks. We lost Amazon to Boston, I don't know what the hell Boston gave them, but we lost it. That's something that we're gonna have to start looking at, you know, where do we put those type of companies that bring those jobs here? So, we need to look at that. Regardless how well we plan, regardless of what we do, our citizens must be able to move around in this county, and that's transportation-wise and transit-wise. They gotta move around. So, let's stop playing political games, and let's stop doing these legal maneuvers with our citizens' lives and well-being, and get busy doing what they expect for us to do as their elected officials. And with that, we adjourn.